At this time, we call the Wednesday, August 10th, 2022 meeting of the zoning appeals to order, zoning board of appeals to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Joanne Chester. Matt Cho.
Here.
Ashley McLaughlin.
Here.
Adam Roche.
It's on his way, I think.
Nancy Yutman.
Present.
Charles Warmbrun.
Here.
And Harvey Welch.
Here. We have a quorum. Are there any changes to our agenda?
There are no changes.
This time, then, entertain the approval of the minutes of the June 15th, 2022, meeting of the zoning board of appeals.
So moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we have a roll call, please.
I think it can be a voice vote now that we are in person.
All in favor of approval of the minutes indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And even opposed. Those minutes are approved. Are there any communications?
There was one that I emailed to you on Monday for the parking variance case, and, Kat, did you?
And one that was just handed out to you with regard to the garage variance case.
All right, are there any continued public hearings?
There are none.
All right, at this time, anyone that wishes to be heard tonight needs to stand and be sworn. This does not obligate you to speak, but if you wish to be heard, you must be sworn, so. Do you swear or affirm that any testimony you give tonight will be true and accurate to the best of your belief?
Yep.
Thank you. At this time, then, we'll call for hearing ZBA 2022 A-01. A request by Octa Pharma Plasma, Inc., for an appeal of an interpretation of the Urbana zoning ordinance made by the zoning administrator. Do we have a staff report, please?
Harvey, I'm going to present from here. Octa Pharma Plasma, Inc. has filed an appeal of a use determination by the zoning administrator. The zoning ordinance requires us to open the case after the appeal has been filed, within 30 days after the appeal has been filed. However, the applicant's Octa Pharma Plasma, Inc. have requested that the case be continued to the regular meeting on October 19th. This has to do with their lease negotiations, so they've requested it to be pushed to that meeting. So we're asking that the hearing is open tonight and that it be continued to the regular meeting on October 19th.
Did I understand that the hearing would allow for audience input and just not any staff report, or?
I think, yeah, I think this would constitute the staff report. If people wanted to speak on behalf of the case tonight as part of public hearing, I think that would be okay. I think it would be more suitable to have public input at the October 19th meeting, but I think in both meetings it would be acceptable.
Well, I think that's probably the way we would do it. Is there anyone here wishing to be heard on behalf of Octa Pharma Plasma, Inc.? No. No. Oh, all right, go ahead, Nancy.
Excuse me, I was just wondering if they were to put the documents on the screen so I could. I get.
Yeah, there's, there was no formal staff report for this case since the case will be opened and then continued to the October 19th meeting. Kevin will have a formal staff report and presentation at that meeting. But for the other cases, we'll present on the, on the screen, yeah.
Back then to the Octa Pharma, is, are there members of the audience wishing to be heard in opposition to Octa Pharma's request? Hearing none, then this matter will be continued to?
The regularly scheduled zoning board of appeals meeting on October 19th.
Harvey.
Yes, Charles.
I think we need to pass that by a majority vote.
To continue it?
Yes.
All right, that's, that's fine.
So I'll move that we continue it to the October 19th meeting.
It's been moved and seconded. I think we can do that by roll call, or do we have to have?
Roll call.
Roll call. All right. Call the question, please.
Matt Cho.
Yes.
Ashley McLaughlin.
Yes.
Adam Roche.
Yes.
Nancy Yutman.
Yes.
Charles Warmbrun.
Yes.
Harvey Welch.
Yes.
And Joanne Chester.
Yes.
And that was moved by?
Charles.
Charles and seconded by Nancy.
Yes. And that's been approved and moved and to be heard at the regular meeting on October, you said?
Yes.
October 19th. All right, at this time, then, we will call for hearing ZBA 2022 Major-04. A request by Andrew Fell on behalf of FLC 1009 West Stoughton LLC for a major variance to reduce the minimum parking requirement by 60% to allow for construction of a multifamily residential apartment building at 1009 Stoughton Avenue in B3U General Business University zoning district. May we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Board. Thank you for coming tonight. This is a request by FLC 1009 West Stoughton LLC to reduce the minimum parking requirement by 60% to allow for construction of a multifamily residential apartment building at 1009 Stoughton Avenue in the B3U General Business University zoning district. Table 87 of the zoning ordinance requires 10 parking spaces for the current building and would require 13 parking spaces for the proposed building. In 1981, an addition to an older single-family home was built on the single-family home. It had a ground-level rear-loading parking area, which turned the original residence into an eight-unit apartment building with 17 bedrooms. The building's parking area included only six parking spaces with none designated as an accessible space. An access drive off Stoughton along the north side of the house provided one additional parking space, bringing the total to seven parking spaces. The building and parking areas were demolished in July of 2022 in preparation to build a new apartment building. That new apartment building construction is not the subject of tonight's case, it's simply the parking reduction for that building. The property is located on the south side of Stoughton Street, west of Harvey Street, sorry, east of Harvey Street. The site and adjacent properties to the northeast, south, and west are zoned B3U General Business University. All of the apartment buildings on this block of West Stoughton have rear-loading parking areas, which are accessed by a mid-block alley. Here's the zoning for the area. You see some medium-high-density multifamily residential to the west and to the south, and some of the campus properties are zoned conservation, recreation, education to the south as well. The future land use designation by the comprehensive plan shows this block and the block to the north as campus mixed use, and the blocks to the west and south as institutional to reflect the university's usage. The applicant is building a three-story, 18-unit apartment building that would meet all development regulations of the B3U zoning district. The new building would add one bedroom compared to the old building. The new parking area is proposed to have seven parking spaces, or six, when one must be marked to create an accessible space. An accessible space is not required until requested by a resident or an employee who needs that space. One additional on-street parking space would be created when the curb cut for the old access drive would be closed. Staff believe that this additional on-street parking space would provide a greater benefit as it would be also available to the general public. So the ordinance required 10 parking spaces for the previous building. It provided only six parking spaces, or 30% fewer than required now. It also has no accessible parking spaces. This is summarized in table two. This would compare to the proposed building, which would start off with seven parking spaces, and then that would come down to six if and when an accessible space was requested. This calculates down to a 40% reduction in the parking space required if it stays at the seven parking spaces. If and when that accessible parking space is requested and it's striped and now there's only six parking spaces, that calculates to 50%, 54% parking reduction, and that, for convenience sake by the applicant, was rounded up to 60%. The applicant believes that the parking requirement should be reduced for two reasons. First, that the previous building did not provide the minimum number of parking spaces, so simply carrying forward that reduction of parking provided. And that, second, that the number of parking spaces required is more than is needed to meet the demand for parking spaces at their building. Parking spaces are rented to residents for an additional fee of $750 a year. The applicant stated they typically have a surplus of parking spaces that are not rented by building residents. These spaces are then made available to residents in other buildings by the applicant for a higher rate than to, offered to the general public to rent. Reducing the number of parking spaces required would reduce the number of surplus parking spaces for which the property owners must then find renters. Some photos. This is a street view photograph of the property that was recently torn down. You can tell that this is an older, 1889-built, originally large, single-family home that in the back, this large addition was built on that includes more apartments. These two shots are other aerial photography views. The one on the left shows the rear of the property that was torn down. You can see that it's two-story, and there was parking at ground level below the second story, and that there were six parking spaces there. And then the picture on the right is a shot down the alley. This is the, you know, second story that is elevated over the former parking area. In both of these, please note that there's, in the picture on the left, there's one car parked in the parking area, and on the picture on the right, there are no cars parked in the parking area. This is a line drawing of the previous building footprint showing how it was laid out with the six parking spaces in the back with a first-floor overhang, a two-story frame building. This is a preliminary building footprint. The building has not been designed yet, but essentially, it's, would be 18 single-bedroom or efficiency apartments, three-story, which would be permitted by right in the B3U zoning district. And then the seven parking spaces below it, one they show here in its, you know, future projected accessible parking spaces, then showing six total parking spaces. In addition, the applicant provided some parking space usage data. They recently acquired this property, you know, just last year, so they don't have historical parking data of their own for this property. But they own one, two, three, four, five, six other properties in the area. This was information, I believe, 26, let's see, for 2021, 2022. They provided the number of bedrooms in each of the buildings, the number of parking spaces that are at those buildings, and then, for simplicity's sake, I calculated the percentage. And 1009 West Stoughton this past year, none of the spaces were rented by residents. Four of the spaces were rented to non-residents, which still left two of the spaces vacant. And then going through the rest of their properties, you can see, if you just focus on column K, which is the vacancy rate, their vacancy rates for their properties range between 40, sorry, 33% and 66%, with an average of 50%. So their assertion is that there is more parking required by the Urbana zoning ordinance than is used by the residents or even non-residents of those buildings. City planning staff performed their own parking study of campus area multifamily residential buildings in 2016, 2017 for a similar case that requested reductions in parking further south on Lincoln. At that time, the then-current owner of the subject property reported that only two of the six spaces in the parking area were rented by building residents, and that the other four parts, spaces were rented to non-building residents. And finally, staff reviewed aerial photography of the site from several years from two different providers. We didn't analyze those statistically, but visual review regularly showed at least some vacant parking spaces along Stoughton and Harvey Streets, and especially along Springfield Avenue, which has parking on both sides. You know, there is no knowing what time of day or what day of the year. Those were taken often, the aerial photography gets it down to months, but when one sees regular vacancy, that might be an indication that there is enough parking available to find a space in a reasonable distance of your site. Staff analyzed the variance criteria that are listed in the zoning ordinance. I will not read through them here, but I will go through the summary of findings. I am happy to discuss or answer questions about those criteria. They're basically summarized in the findings. So the variance addresses the pedestrian environment and high minimum parking requirements, which are special circumstances and practical difficulties to the strict application of the zoning ordinance at this site. The variance addresses the small lot size and high minimum parking requirement that applies to many properties in this area, the future development of which would likely result in similar requests for parking variances. The variance addresses the parking deficiency that this apartment complex has been operating with for decades, which was not the result of a situation or condition created by the applicant. The variance would not change the location of the rear-loading parking area and would not alter the essential character of the street or neighborhood. And the variance is unlikely to cause a nuisance from shifting parking onto other parking lots, and may actually reduce parking congestion by creating one public on-street parking space. And the variance represents the minimum deviation necessary from the requirements of the zoning ordinance and legalizes the parking deficiency that has been in effect for decades. We have some other photographs that I took. This is looking east down the alley. This area under stilts here is a parking area for the adjacent apartment building. You can see vacant spaces there. It's a little more difficult, some of these, this is a parking space here, sorry, parking space here. There are, were other vacant spaces when I visited the site for inspection. This is looking west towards Harvey Street. There are, this is parking underneath this building. These are parking spaces here and here. This lot on the far side of the chain-link fence is another parking area. I believe it was four or five parking spaces. There was one car parked there, the blue cars mine. This was at probably 10 o'clock in the morning on weekday. So the staff recommends that the zoning board have appealed forward this case to city council with a recommendation of approval of the major variance of reducing the minimum parking requirement by 60%. The ZBA can take that option, or to approve the variance with certain terms and conditions, or to deny the variance request. In either of those latter two options, the board should articulate their findings accordingly so that the applicant knows why the conditions are placed or why it was denied. That's the end of the presentation. Andrew Fell is here to speak on behalf of the applicant, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Are there, are there any questions for the staff? Yes, Nancy.
So there would be 18 efficiency apartments, one person per apartment?
There would be 18 efficiency apartments. We don't regulate occupancy based on those, so that would be regulated by building code. One would assume that there would be at least one person in each of those apartments. The parking calculation is based on, I believe, .7 times the number of individual one-bedroom or efficiency apartments in that building. There are currently 17 bedrooms on the building that was just torn down.
And I would just comment that I drove down Stoughton yesterday, 5:15, and every spot along, oh, I didn't turn on my mic, but every spot along Stoughton at 5:15 yesterday had a car parked there and was congested. And I realize that students would rather park for free than pay to park. And also, the parking spaces along Springfield are often empty because they are two-hour meters. And you can't go to class, have lunch, come back, and think you're, and you will have a ticket, so students do not park on Springfield. That's my comment.
Are there additional questions for the staff? Yes, go on.
This is my old neighborhood. I walked it for 20 years. And in all the time I lived there, between 1971 and 1995, it was always packed with cars. And every, and it became worse because everything west of, what was it? Not Gregory, the next one over, Harvey, is all metered, all the way up. That's metered because that's, it is.
On Stoughton as well?
Oh, yeah. I think there's one missing on the corner, but it's yellow, so they're not supposed to park there. But no, I just drove by there. Everything, it's metered. But that has always been packed. I mean, the students aren't here now, so it's, and, but it's always been packed. It didn't matter which buildings were there, which buildings weren't there. It's always going to be full. And one of my questions is, you know, it's built up. The only vacant space over there now is Main Street from Gregory to Lincoln. I think all except one house, half, half a lot, is vacant, and there, somebody's going to build something there. And is, is that the same zoning as this?
I cannot say. I don't know.
I, I don't know if your map was that big.
It, um...
There we go. Harvey, Stoughton, yes, it's, it's B3U, all the way over to Lincoln on the north side. So, so would this come up again there, too?
Possibly, if the applicant thinks that they're being required to add in more parking than they need.
They have, they have a whole half a block, basically, so that would be easier to do. But I don't think it can get any worse than it already is.
And, and so, I think that's essentially what their first argument is, is they are putting in one bedroom more than the 17 that are already there, and they're providing one more parking space than is all, in the parking area that is in the rear.
It's always parked, fully parked on Main Street from Harvey to Lincoln, and up on Clark Street, it's always fully parked. When the students are down, there are no places to park there. Just, just the way, the way it's always been.
Yes, Matt.
I have a question about the, you mentioned a space up front that they're giving up. Is that not counted in the calculation?
No, it's a...
Yes.
So basically, they're just getting rid of their drive from Stoughton and just keeping that back as a metered spot?
No, not on that side of the street, not, not in that block. It's not metered in that block.
Maybe I misheard, but I heard there was one spot that was...
So they are, they would be closing the access drive that currently has a space on it along the north side of the building. We presume that Public Works would require that curb to be closed and then would create a parking space there. I don't recall seeing meters on Stoughton when I was out there. I wasn't focused on it.
Everything that is west of Harvey is in the university's expansion district, and those are all metered.
This is east of Harvey?
But they're not metered east of the...
Okay.
Everything west is metered.
Okay.
So I guess even though they're not getting credit for that, they're actually adding eight parking spots for this development?
One could make that argument that they are actually...
And while the requirement is two, and I understand it's probably congested, I don't think, you know, that building alone is going to solve the parking issues of all of Stoughton and, I guess, campus.
I, and I kind of look to the, you know, the data that we're provided by the applicant that shows that half of the parking spaces that they do provide aren't being used by their residents in that building, or even in the residents in their other buildings. So, you know, I don't, we don't say, "How many of your residents have cars?" I mean, that is the typical argument that we hear is, "Every resident has a car." I don't know that, and we don't get into that business.
Are there any additional questions for staff?
Well...
Yes, Nancy.
I would just say that perhaps the parking spaces that are under the buildings are not taken because the rent is 750 a month, a year, $62 a month, whether you're summer break or not. And I think the real issue is, how many cars are there? How many of the tenants are going to have cars? I think that's the real...
Which is not something that the zoning ordinance regulates.
Mm-hmm.
We don't regulate it for single-family dwellings either. But we require every single or two-family house to provide two parking spaces, whether they have one car, two car, or five cars, or no cars, which is why we have the variance process.
Thank you, Marcus. Does the applicant or anyone here in favor of the applicant wish to be heard?
Andrew Fell, architect for the project.
Yeah, you have to sign in.
As usual, Marcus did a tremendous job presenting the case, so my job now is to answer any questions. So, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Are there questions for Mr. Fell from the board? Hearing, I'm sorry, yes, go ahead, Nancy.
Yeah, if you were required to put in more parking, would that decrease the number of apartments?
The reality is, yes, but it's kind of a difficult question to answer because it's a, it's an algebra problem with a lot of variables, which deals with how, how the parking is counted on the site, and some of it's the geometry of the site. parking is counted on the site and the, some of it's the geometry of the site. But although it's not, it shouldn't really be a consideration of the zoning board, one of the things that happens in buildings now is, for instance, this building uh goes from 17 bedrooms to 18 bedrooms. However, the unit count went from seven to 18, right? So we can, we can also design a building on this site if we made all of these four-bedroom units. Our parking count now is, I believe, eight required with the same number of bedrooms. So part of what, part of the issue of this parking situation comes with, partially in the way parking is counted, and I'm not here to solve that problem, but the other is just the dynamic of, of what apartments have to be now. Apart, uh, the, the rental market is not for two bedrooms or three or four bedroom apartments, it's for one bedrooms and efficiencies. That, uh, in Urbana increases our parking requirement. It could lower the number of bedrooms and increase our parking requirement just the way it's counted because a one-bedroom apartment counts for almost 50% more parking than it, than a bedroom in a two-bedroom apartment. So it's, 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 it, it hurts, it hurts a client to build one-bedroom apartments because the parking, the parking count is so high, he can build less building. So, uh, again, not necessarily germane to the argument, but, but building a better building to, uh, to benefit everyone, I believe, hurts us in the economic part of that equation, right? So, so this type of building is more expensive for the client to build and so the way we have to offset that expense is, is to build the biggest building we can. And in this instance, we believe that the parking situation uh in the request satisfies the need for the property, so we feel it's appropriate to get the building that we want to build. Now, the building we want to build should not be a consideration for your, for your judgment on the case. It's, it's simply a case of a reduction in parking. And I believe that, you know, Marcus's uh, uh, evidence from the, from the owners of the property demonstrate that that parking is not needed. I honestly, I don't know what a parking space costs in the city of Urbana. I, I rent a parking space in the city of Champaign and it cost me $740 a year to rent that space. So the equivalent of, of the apartment owner, they try to, most of them try to keep the parking rate close to, to the city rate. You know, they would rather, the, this building owner would rather rent a 100% of his parking. He makes more money that way. So it, so his goal is to have as much parking as he can rent and no more. So, okay. That was a long way to answer your question, so.
Are there additional questions for the petitioner? No, I, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard in favor of the request? Hearing none at this time, are any members of the audience wishing to be heard in opposition to this request for the parking variance? Please come forward. You have to sign in and have a seat.
I was just trying to figure out.
Please introduce your, just your name.
Okay, my name is David Perrin.
Go ahead.
I was just trying to figure out when the pictures were taken.
Marcus.
Pictures in the staff report?
Yes.
Okay, um, so some of them were from Eagle View Aerial Photography, which would have been probably 2021. Google, I think, is 2020. And then the pictures I took myself for, you know, the, two weeks ago.
Okay, so during the summertime?
Yes, at least the ones that I took pictures of. Which is why I relied on the data provided by the applicant rather than just spot photography.
I just have concerns over parking on campus in general, so that's why I was asking. Thank you.
Is that all you wish to say, sir? All right. Further comments from any audience members in opposition? Hearing none, are there any, any additional response from the applicant, Andrew? No. Any additional response from the staff based on anything that has been said?
I don't think so. I would be happy to answer more questions.
Okay, Nancy, go ahead.
Boy, it sounds like the photos of the parking area were taken during the time of COVID, when maybe there weren't very many students on campus, '20 and '21.
Which is why I rely on the applicant's parking data and, and said, these are spot photography.
Right, and there is a letter from a lady. Did everyone read this? Who lives on Gregory Street in opposition.
Joanne, you had a comment?
I just was going to say that in the 25 years I lived in that neighborhood, there was never any parking places. You'd be lucky if you found one, maybe on Gregory. But any, they were always full because of all the apartment buildings that were there. And in that era, you know, students had lots of cars. And they don't have as many cars now. But I'm sure, I'm, I'm sure that it's packed. I know that it's packed during, you know, in the school season. It's just packed. No different than it ever was.
Yes, Nancy. Ashley.
I would just add that, um, I think there have been steps taken by campus in the last 10 years to reduce the number of cars on campus, discouraging car ownership, particularly for underclassmen. So I don't know to what extent that impacts parking in that area or parking or car ownership for students in general. But it seems to me that if a couple of spaces are being added and the housing is being updated, it seems like we're still coming out a little bit on top in terms of parking. And there is a bus route on Springfield and it's close to campus, so I don't personally see any need to require additional, or not, I guess, approve this request.
I believe then we may be ready to call for the, sorry, do you have something else? Matt? Well, that's good because I'm, I'm getting ready to ask for one, Matt. At this time, I believe then we may be ready to call this uh case for motion. And I would remind um the board that this being a major variance has to be approved by two, two-thirds, right? Two-thirds, three-fourths, some, two-thirds majority uh for approval to be considered by the uh city council. So with that said, ready for motion?
I'll do it. I uh move that we approve case number ZBA 2022, major variance 04, to city council with a recommendation of approval of the major variance of reducing the minimum parking requirement by 60%.
It's been moved, is there a second to that?
Second.
Is there any additional comments or questions? Then hearing none, we are ready for a roll call vote.
Adam Rouge?
Yes.
Nancy Uthman?
No.
Charles Warmbrun?
Yes.
Harvey Welch?
Yes.
Joanne Chester? Matt Cho?
Yes.
And Ashley McLaughlin?
Yes.
That motion carries by the necessary majority to merit forwarding on to the city council for review at the meeting of, um, I actually have it written down.
September 12th.
September 12th. Thank you to all concerned with that case. At this time, then, we would call for hearing ZBA 2022, major dash 05, a request by Stephen and Deborah Woodward for a major variance to allow 40-foot by 100-foot accessory structure at 2003 Airport Road in the R1 Single Family Residential Zoning District. And we have a staff report, please.
Yes. Excuse me. All right. This is a request by Stephen and Deborah Woodward for a major variance to allow a 40-foot by 100-foot garage at 2003 Airport Road. Staff finds that the case meets the variance criteria and recommends that the zoning board of appeals recommend approval of the request. This is a location map of the property. It's on the south side of Airport Road, um, east of Cunningham Avenue. The applicants purchased the property earlier this year in June. The property is approximately two and a half acres and the existing house is approximately 2,300 square feet. The requested variance would allow the applicants to build a 4,000-square-foot Morton-style garage building for Mr. Woodward to store and work on his collectible cars. The proposed garage would exceed the maximum area allowed for the accessory structures, so a variance is required to allow the request. This is a zoning map of the property. It's zoned R1 Single Family Residential, and the adjacent properties are all zoned R2 Single Family Residential. Nearby are other residences in the Landis Farms and Somerset subdivisions. The site is substantially larger than the surrounding residential properties. And I'll just point out, this particular property was not platted as part of the Landis Farms or Somerset subdivisions. It was kind of subdivided around. A few site photos. The applicants request a variance to allow a 4,000-square-foot garage in the backyard of their property. The existing house is approximately 2,300 square feet with an attached two-car garage on the east side. There is also a 700-square-foot shed in the backyard. This is a photo of a part of the backyard and you can see the shed up in the right-hand corner. And here's a better photo of the shed. And this is the general area of where the proposed garage would go. Mr. Woodward collects and works on cars in his free time and he would like to build a garage as a storage and workspace. The garage would not be considered a second principal structure or a home occupation as the use is recreational and incidental to the principal use, which is the house. The garage would be larger than the maximum permitted 1,000-square-foot accessory structure, so a variance is required. The property is significantly larger than the other residentially-zoned properties in the city and nearby. The applicants purchased the property with the impression that the larger-than-average lot size would leave plenty of room for the desired garage. The zoning ordinance limits accessory structures in residential districts to a maximum of 1,000 square feet regardless of the lot size. The regulations were designed to prevent accessory structures from dominating the principal use on residential lots and to ensure that structures comply with the development regulations for the district. The floor area ratio for this property, including the proposed garage, would be approximately 0.06. And in the R1 district, 0.30 is the maximum. The open space ratio would be approximately 14.0, where 0.50 is the minimum. The garage will also comply with the required rear and side yards for the R1 district. Uh, these are a few photos of Airport Road. This is looking east and west. And then here's a rough site plan for the garage. Given the size of the property, the proposed garage would be larger than the house but would still be incidental to the principal use and would comply with all development regulations for the R1 district. An attached garage of this size could be built onto the existing house without a variance. However, given the layout of the house and the large lot size, the applicants would like to build a garage as a standalone building in their backyard. I've got a couple obliques here. And I'll also point out, this lot is essentially cut in half by an existing fence that runs through the middle from east to west. The proposed garage would be built on the north side of that lot, so the entire south half of the lot would remain undeveloped. Uh, right now, it's basically prairie grass. This is another oblique looking east. And we'll stay there. To summarize, staff found that the application meets the variance criteria. The variance will not serve as a special privilege as the property is significantly larger than a standard residential lot. The applicants were unaware of the zoning ordinance's requirements for accessory structures and they purchased the property with the assumption that the large lot would provide ample space for the desired garage. The garage generally meets or represents the minimum deviation for the zoning ordinance's requirements to meet the desires of the applicant, which are to provide a storage and workspace for the collectible cars. Given the excess space on the property and the layout of the house, the applicants would like to construct the detached garage in their backyard, so a variance is required. The zoning board of appeals has the following options on the requested major variance. Forward the case to city council with a recommendation of approval. Forward the case to city council with a recommendation to approve the variance with certain terms and conditions or deny the requested variance. If the zoning board of appeals elects to do so, it should articulate findings supporting the denial. Staff recommends that the zoning board of appeals forward the case to city council with a recommendation of approval with one condition, that the garage will generally conform to the site plan as shown in Exhibit C. Uh, I'll also point out that that would leave a seven-foot setback from the eastern lot line, which is not all that visible on this site plan, but it was also mentioned in your staff report. I can take any questions for staff and the applicant is also available via phone. She's called into this meeting so she can hear our discussion.
I have a question.
Sure.
I know you said that the applicant has just purchased this home recently, but was that home there before the rest of the subdivision was built?
Yes, so this house has been here since the 80s. Uh, the previous homeowners used this big backyard area for a horse stable, so they had residential horses on the lot.
But, but the house, the house.
Yes.
Predated the subdivision development.
Forty, 45 years.
Okay, all right. Are there other questions for staff?
Go ahead, Charles.
They're going to have to extend the driveway all the way to the shop, is that correct?
Yes.
And that's going to run. Once again, I find myself looking at these things and I have no really detail. So it looks to me like there are trees there. It looks to me like the building is on a 45-degree angle, as I would call it. I mean, uh, is there any rationale for that from the staff point of view?
Yeah, a couple, couple things to mention. So we did not require like contractor or architect drawings for this particular structure. It's going to be Morton-style. Um, and the rationale behind the 45-degree angle, I think, is actually to preserve the trees to the north and to fit it between the lot line and the existing shed. So while this may not be to perfect scale, and I would not be surprised if it was not to perfect scale, um, it should fit between the shed and the eastern lot line with a seven-foot setback from the eastern lot line and then it'd be south of those trees to the north.
And then you're not recommending any screening anywhere?
Uh, that's a good question. So I mentioned that fence that runs on the south half of the lot, there's some existing screening on the western half from the neighboring uh single-family homes. They have opaque fencing and you might be able to see it in these photos, a little bit off to the right. Over here where there's um space here, there isn't screening there. Uh, if that were something that you felt like warranted a condition, uh, that's something that could be added as a condition. But the house to the north has trees that run along that eastern lot line as well.
Then a Morton building, I'm not sure I know what that is, but can you enter it only on one side, one entrance?
Uh, that would be a question for the applicant. I'm not sure how they'll lay it out, uh, but I think it'll be similar in style to this building that's already on the lot.
And, and how high?
And how high will this Morton building be?
That is also a great question. So accessory structures in residential districts are capped at a fifteen-foot maximum height. That would be measured to the midpoint of a pitched roof. That would be the maximum height for the structure as an accessory structure, fifteen feet.
Fifteen feet. That's not really very high.
No.
Additional questions?
Adam? Yeah. Other than the size of the building, are all other regulations met with this?
Yes. So as I mentioned during the presentation, the floor-area ratio and open-space ratio are met by wide margin. A five-foot required side yard is required in R one. That will be met with a seven-foot setback. And then there's really no change to the front yard or rear yard, given the massive backyard that's already there.
Enjoy it.
I realize that it's a five-foot side, but I would think, based on the size of this building, that it should probably be bigger than that. I know that when we built our garage, we had to have it ten foot from the property line on the back because it was big. And I think that this is such a big building that five foot, or even I saw this at seven-and-a-half feet, I think, I think ten foot would be better, just because it's so big.
I understand. I'll leave that to the applicant to explain what the seven-foot setback rationale was, and we can go from there.
Any additional questions for staff? Yes, Charles?
Do we know how wide this lot is?
Yes. That's a great question, and I don't think I have the dimensions on here now. When I was doing the lot calculations, I want to say it was in the eighty-five-foot range, somewhere around there. And the applicant might know that better than I do off the top of my head.
That would mean these houses would only be...
Any additional questions?
Forty-six feet.
Hearing none. We do have one. Go ahead.
So if the lots, if this lot is only eighty-five feet wide and the building is a hundred feet, that's why it has to be on the angle?
Do you look at the two houses at the very, excuse me, at the very bottom? Those are probably at least sixty-five or seventy feet wide.
Let me see if I can get the lot measurement for you. I'll pull that up while we're...
See, these two houses have to be more than forty feet.
It's wide. It's like, I mean, twenty, thirty.
Maybe we can get the answer from the applicant.
I'll grab that for you once I, or maybe Marcus can pull it up real quick.
We have any further questions for the staff while we get this answer? If not, then at this time, does the applicant wish to be heard? Either Stephen or Deborah Woodward present? No? Oh, that's right, you said something.
I'm on the phone.
Sorry, go ahead.
Does she know how wide the lot is?
She may. Deb, do you know how wide the lot is?
Is there a question?
Yeah, Deb, do you know how wide the lot is from east to west lot lines?
Hundred and sixty-five feet.
Hundred and sixty-five.
From east, the lot across is, geez, I'd say it's over a hundred and forty feet across.
Ms. Woodward, do you have anything you want to say?
Yeah, basically, the purpose of this, as Kate had mentioned, is that when we bought the property, our intent was to build the building so we could store some of our antique cars, and it was not explained to us, this process. The other thing that we looked at is, in order to do this, the other option we had was to attach the building to the house, and we didn't want to remove any of those trees because it makes it unique to that property. So we're trying to find an alternative to not have to remove the trees and put the building at the back of the yard.
Did I understand you to say that if it was attached to the back of the house, we wouldn't be here? It would be no question?
Exactly.
Same size?
Which is, yeah, it's pretty crazy to think about. They could attach it to their existing garage on the east side of the lot or on the back side and extend that driveway around, and it would still be considered the single-family house with an attached garage. The things that would come into play during our plan review on that would be floor-area ratio and open-space ratio, like we've talked about, and those would be met by and large.
So this is a matter of location?
Pretty much.
Anything else you wish to say, Ms. Woodward?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last question.
There is no question, but is there anything you wish to say in behalf of your application?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Oh, so again, the purpose is not to remove the trees and to attach the building to the house, which we could by code. We wanted to preserve the trees and put it in the back of the lot.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard in... Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Can I ask you, in the material that we have here, the purpose was to store your cars and then work on cars. So could you describe to me what working on cars means?
Yeah, so the working on cars is more polishing them and just the basic maintenance of them. It will, it's not, won't be a outside shop.
And this building is, does it have, excuse me, this building, does it have only one
It will have a couple of garage doors so that it'll make ease of getting the cars out. So we have over ten vehicles that we want to store in the garage.
Would you have the ability to drive through the garage, I guess, is what I'm asking you? Would you have garage doors on both ends?
No. What we're looking at is having them on the one end facing the house, and then we would park two cars front to back.
Thank you.
And how high do you anticipate the Morton shed being? And how high is your shed? What do you call that wooden shed?
I believe the current one is about twelve or thirteen that's on the property, and we would be looking at the fourteen-to-fifteen-foot max height.
Are you planning to install a car lift?
I'm sorry, a car what?
For working on the underside of the cars? To elevate the cars above the floor level?
Oh, a car lift?
Yeah.
Yes, we'll probably put one car lift in there so we can change oil and stuff like
Thank you, Ms. Woodward. I think we're done with the questions. Anyone in the audience wishing to be heard in favor of the application for the variance? Hearing none? Those who wish to be heard in opposition? Anyone wishing to be heard in opposition?
Well, good evening.
Introduce yourself, name.
Greg Hedingman.
Thank you.
And my property is adjacent to their property, and probably mostly, from what I can tell from the example of where they want to place this building, I'm probably going to be the most affected person by it. What I now have is a fairly open westerly view. It's just going to be blocked by what is apparently going to be a forty-foot or a hundred-foot by fifteen-foot tall wall of aluminum or steel, depending on how it's made. But I really don't feel that personally, it's going to look, it's not going to fit in with the architectural design of the entire subdivision out there. I get it about them wanting to have a building to store their cars and everything, but it's just like just going to be some giant eyesore. And I also can't help from thinking that sometime in the future, if they decide to sell that property, that that building could either be an asset or a liability to them in getting rid of their property. But let's say they sold it, and who would be looking at a property that had a building that huge on it, and what would their use for it be at that point? Like industrial storage, or maybe they would find a use for something like these people are, like putting their antique cars in it? But that building's never going to go away. It's always going to be the giant eyesore that's going to be right in the middle of all that. And it's kind of a sad thing that the previous owner didn't sell its property when they were developing the subdivisions out there, but it is what it is. He had talked to me at times in the past about maybe offering it to the city of Urbana to turn it into a public park, which would have been nice. And I had had my own ideas of getting the property owners around there to purchase it and then turn it into a park as well. But I would say that it sounds to me like they have the legal right to put at least a thousand-foot building in there, but to request a four-thousand-foot building to put it, what, ten cars in there? That's just overkill to me. So I'm standing in opposition to it. I don't like cutting down trees, but let them cut those trees down and attach it to their home. And I would have to ask any of you on the council here, what if they were going to put that right next to your house? And that's a pretty good question there. So I would like to just pass this on to somebody else.
Thank you.
Can we go together?
Can you?
Our husband and wife.
Sure. You both will need to sign in.
Okay, so we are...
Introduce yourself, please.
Mr. and Mrs. Charles and Erleene Peters.
Thank you.
We live at twenty-seven oh one North Skyline Drive. We live right next door to Greg.
Yourself, I'll tell them.
The structure that they're proposing appears to be seven feet off of the property line of both Greg and our property. It's right at that juncture of our property lines. We moved into this house in two thousand and seven. We were the second occupants of this Skyline Drive. When we moved in there, we were assured that that lot behind us would either stay as pasture or it would be put into, as Greg said, a park. So for fifteen years, we have lived there. We have never had any dispute or problem with any of our neighbors. As the area grew up, it is a residential area. It is not commercial. The building that they're proposing is a commercial building. A Morton building is a steel building. It is an eyesore. When Mr. Woodward decides he's going to go out and work in his workshop, he will be eighty feet from our master bedroom. He will determine what time we get up in the morning. He will determine what time we go to bed at night. He will make a determination of if we can go out and enjoy our backyard. We do not have a fence. And they have stated that what is out there currently is a storage shed. It's the old barn that a horse used to live in. That was not occupied by a horse during the fifteen years that we have lived there. There has been nothing, prairie land. And the former occupant took care of that land. He always mowed it, or he had somebody come in and get the hay. The new owners haven't taken care of the land at all. The barn, which is actually what that is, is a barn or stable, looks much worse than it ever did when Dale was there, even though Dale wasn't always able to take care of his land. We implore you not to allow this to come into our backyard.
We believe that the stable is more than, how tall did they say? Twelve or fifteen feet? We're pretty sure it's taller than that. To me, it's closer to eighteen or twenty. And we did a lot of research on the Morton buildings, and the Morton buildings that we've looked at that are that size, the average height of those is twenty-nine feet total at the peak. So it's twenty, it's twenty-nine feet tall. So if it's, if it's actually going to be in, I'm not sure, I understood if she said that that couldn't be any taller than that, according to the city, or not. Another question I have is the size of that building, what is going to happen with water drainage? And it's that close to Greg's house and it's that close to our house. Right now, our backyard, there's a, there's a low level all the way down the line next to his property, their property fence and ours, which drains down, partly down our block. If we get a lot of rain, we get rain that comes up in our yard. If we have a roof that size and you get a good rain and you're getting all that extra water that we weren't getting before, because before the land was absorbing that water. If we get all that drainage that's coming off of that roof coming in our direction, then what's that going to do to our yards?
We're going to have flooding problems if we have something that size draining into the little ditches that go down our backyards.
Another thing, is it okay if I call you Kate?
Cat, yes.
Cat. Something that she had mentioned was divided into two lots, and she said that it would only be in the upper part of the lot, the north part of the lot. If you look at the drawing, you can see that it goes right across the fence and goes quite a few feet into the southern part of that pasture too. And that's one of our biggest concerns is, right now, if we look at our backyard, we can see sunsets. If you put that building in there, back of our house, we're not going to be able to see sunsets anymore. And what was another thing we were talking about?
You know, currently, that building could be used according to what he says, but then if he moves or if he, if they pass away, then again, we're going to be... But then if he moves, or if they pass away, then again, we're going to be fighting what they're going to do with this area. Are they going to start putting junk cars out into that big lot that we have that goes down in that area? Will that be allowed? You know, it's like, we've invested 15 years of our life in this house. We thought it would be our forever house. At this point, we're in our 70s, and we're going to have to start thinking about leaving that area if this is the kind of a building you're going to allow in our backyard.
I have one question for you. You said when you, you were the first people to occupy on Skyline, you said someone said that no type of development like this would occur? Who was that?
That's correct. That was Ryan Kuntler, the builder of our house and the builder of Greg's house. Those two houses were the first ones built out there. And they had come to an agreement with Dale, I'm sorry, I don't remember Dale's last name.
It's all right. But it was the builder, not the owner of the land?
It was the builder, and he had made an agreement with Dale. And Dale had specified-
Dale was the owner?
Was the previous owner.
All right.
Now, the reason that that was not sold originally with those is because Dale wanted to keep his pasture. In the beginning, he was supposed to have had a horse. And there was one horse that was allowed to be in that pasture.
But it was before we moved in.
But it was before we moved in that area. And I think that something happened with someone in the Landis Farm area, maybe, that they had had a problem with the horse. And so Dale removed that. So that, what you're referring to is a storage shed, the barn, has been there, standing the whole time we've been there, and it is getting very dilapidated. But they are planning to keep that, and they're planning to put that building on the crooked, you know, at an angle in order to keep that old barn.
All right. Thank you.
One of the things also that was mentioned in the letter that she had written was that they were looking at building it right next to their house, and they decided it would be an eyesore for them.
For their backyard. They didn't want to interfere with their own backyard. That would also put the noise and all the traffic up at their house instead of in our backyard.
And if you put a loft or a lift, a car lift, in a 16-foot building, I don't know if you could put a lift in there and be able to raise your car and have to work on it.
And they're planning to put the lift, so they're planning for the building to be the size we said.
The view and how close to some of our house.
We ask you to please deny this.
We never put a fence up because we were calling it reconstruction.
Thank you.
And the other thing that we wanted to mention is our property values. Can you imagine how much our property values will plummet with something of this size in our backyard?
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Others wishing to be heard? If anyone else wishes to be heard, please come forward.
I'm just saying.
Come on. All right, another two, four, come on.
Richard and Natalie Levi?
Before they start, yes. Hold on.
Okay.
You sign in and introduce yourself, but I believe one of the board members has a question for staff. Go ahead.
Sorry, this is related to the last comment. Does the staff do any investigation to see if there's any conditions put on the property saying that something like this couldn't be done by the previous owner?
By the previous owner? So this was not platted as part of Landis Farms or the Somerset subdivision, so it's not incorporated into the covenants of those platted subdivisions? Yeah.
Okay.
I just have a question.
Go ahead, Nancy.
I just have a question. How large of a structure would they be permitted to build if it were attached to their home?
So that would pertain to the floor area and open space requirements for the R1 zoning district. So given the lot size, they could build very, very large in terms of square footage.
Even 4,000 square feet?
Yeah.
Attached to their house?
Yes.
Some way?
Yes. Go ahead, go ahead.
Otherwise, it's 1,000 square feet.
Yes. Accessory structures are limited to 1,000 square feet, and that's aggregate, so that would include the shed that's on the stable, sorry, that's on the property now.
So they could put a walkway, a breezeway from their house to their garage, 50 feet?
It would have to be permanently connected.
Right, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, like an enclosed porch breezeway.
Yeah, that would come down to some building permit requirements as well.
Yeah, but you could do that.
Yes, attached.
And then they could have their 4,000.
Correct.
And what is the height requirement?
In the R1 zoning district, your house can be up to 35 feet tall. An accessory structure is limited to 15 feet tall, measured to the midpoint of a pitched roof. Yes.
I don't know how fruitful we'll be up here, but one of my main concerns-
Just say what you want to say.
I work from home. I edit transcripts for court reporters. I have a very, very important job, and I need my peace and quiet. I work all hours. I can't imagine having something distracting and loud in my backyard. Basically, we live on the other side of Greg. That fenced yard that you saw, that's ours, but it's not a privacy fence, it's just a chain link. They had said something about no one would be able to see it because of fencing. Well, on the other side, in the other subdivision of Landis, that's true, those people probably won't be able to see it. But we have a beautiful sunroom in our house, and I love to watch the sunsets out the back. And this thing is going to be right there. That's all we're going to be able to see. Kind of concerned about if there's going to be painting going on and fumes. I'm also concerned about the water. We have had water in our backyard standing already. I can't imagine having a structure like that putting all that water on us. I don't even know what would happen. So obviously, we're not, we're in opposition. Did you have anything to say?
And they keep saying they're going to store antique cars. Antique cars go from 1980 for past. So what type of cars? There's going to be noise ordinances for just where we live? Are they willing to maintain the volume of their cars and stuff? Because you're talking about 70s cars, Pontiac GTOs, what kind of antique cars is it going to have there? If you attach this house, that's not a problem. We can't do anything about that, but would that be something he'd consider too? If some of these cars are performance cars and things like that?
Is she allowed to answer any of these questions?
Are we allowed?
No, is she allowed? Since she's on the phone. Deborah.
I don't think we, not from, not from-
I didn't know if she could answer any questions that we had, so.
Deb will have an opportunity to speak again. No, I mean, she can answer the questions that have been brought up tonight. And I'll address a few of these as well.
You have anything else?
Just basically, that whole line of houses on, you know, on the Skyline Drive side, it's just going to tear up everything. That's, I mean, that's all. Thank you.
You want to respond now, or should I ask for more?
Either way.
Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard? Please come forward. Sign in and introduce yourself, please.
I'm Michael Oakler, and we live in the Landis Farm area. And it's very, it is pretty, we like to walk our dogs there. And we walk our dogs between Landis Farm and Somerset. And we do look in that pasture as we walk, because, you know, we just think, how neat would it be to see things there, like a park? But when we found out about the shed, it's very, it is going to be, I think it'll just stick out, like you won't even notice our homes anymore. And one thing I'm worried about is if we sell one day, will we not get a nice price tag? Because, yeah, you guys have this really big Morton building. We already missed out on the solar farm that's across the way from us. I wish we'd have got to do a meeting about that. But there's a solar farm across Airport Road that's going to go up, and I don't know, they're not that attractive looking. And that's already another issue that we're too late on, because it's already going up. But, hey, Cat, can I ask how old this couple is that bought this home? I mean, is there-
Deb can answer that. I'm not aware of how old they are.
Okay. I've seen this before, though. I don't know if they're younger people, maybe middle-aged, but people that do this with his cars, I know there's going to be maybe friends coming over there to, hey, would you help me work on my car? And what, they're going to, I'm sure they're going to rev up the engines just to show these beautiful cars off. I mean, I think it's a neat idea to have your collection right in your property. But maybe, maybe they should, you know, if this is going to be a go, maybe they should butt it up and consider house. Anyways, I'm just saying, let's try to leave Landis Farm and Somerset just like it is. I don't know if you've ever been out there, have any of you ever been out there? It's kind of pretty. Yeah, it's a nice little, you know, mid-size area, but, yeah, really nice subdivision. But thanks, guys. That's it for me.
All right. Thank you. Please come forward.
Can I make a statement?
Not yet. We'll hear from all these people, and then you can respond.
Roy Dunaway, is it cool?
Go ahead, sir.
Name's Roy Dunaway. I live at 2709, right on the corner, that gray fence line that you could see in the first picture. That's my house. Biggest thing I want to say is failure for them to find out the proper information isn't failure on our part. You know, if they didn't find the right information before they bought the house, that's not my problem. You know, Charles and Erlene are my mother and father-in-law, so like they said, it's going to be right up in their backyard, 80 foot off their window. And if there is any kind of hot rod style cars, and they're out there working on them and hot rodding them up and down the driveway all day, and then working on their friends' cars or whatever, ultimately, like I said, that's, you know, failure on their part isn't, shouldn't be affected to us. I too was pretty close to Dale, talked to him all the time, the gentleman that owned the house before. And I can concur what everybody else is saying, you know, he wanted one day for there to be a park there or something to keep that natural beauty back there. And you put this thing out there, you're going to see it from space. You know what I mean? It's absolutely ridiculous. And the fact that they are willing to destroy everybody else's view, you know, and throw everybody under the bus that's been in that neighborhood for a really long time, it's just not right. And I just ask you guys to tell them no. And if they want it, like I said, there's nothing we can do if they want it, but put it up on their house. You know what I mean? Don't destroy everybody else's view because of something they didn't plan before they bought the property. So that's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to be heard? Please come forward.
Hi, I'm Myra Sully, and I live in the Landis Farm subdivision. And I just want to reiterate what everybody else is saying. It is a nice neighborhood, and putting a construction like this is going to take it away from that lovely neighborhood to more of a commercialized aspect. People enjoy walking their pets. I take walks two, three times a day, walking around both Landis Farm and Somerset, and it's nice to see the beautiful homes, meet people. But to see this construction would be just a huge eyesore. And if they were thinking of something like this, there was a property right down the road, on Airport Road, that had already a built facility of a, like, storage building, eight-car garage already there. That would have been something they should have considered before buying a property and then thinking about this. And to affect our views of the property, but not affect their views because they like the trees and stuff, is not something to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone, please come forward. I suppose to keep the record straight, sign in again. And introduce yourself again.
All right, I'm David Perrin, and I live in the Landis Farm subdivision. And when I think about the situation, I consider the past Morton buildings that I have seen or have been inside, they're really tall. And the issue that I have with this, among others, not to mention the diagonal style that they're even talking about, but god-awful ugly, it's not tasteful at all. It's going to take up the green space. I do tend to agree with the flooding issue. In my own backyard, we have an issue with, whenever it rains, backyard floods. I can just imagine not having any ground space to absorb that groundwater, because it'll all come out and just flood the, well, I'm sure it would flood the neighborhood closer that I'm in, Landis Farm, that last row of houses. You know, I have concerns about getting rid of the green space. I think one of the largest concerns I have with this is not doing your homework to make sure that what you want to do works with your own master plan. And that's not something that we can control. But that is on the current homeowner. I feel like they should have done their research and worked with the city of Urbana. Lots of information on the Urbana website. You know, the same thing that we would have to do. And not taking the necessary measures to ensure that they've made a sound decision is not something that we as homeowners should end up having to foot the bill for. Additionally, thinking about the lower home values, you know, I mean, when the home values go down, taxes go down, that's going to hurt. Not just us, it'll hurt all of us. So in the green space issue, I feel like, you know, it's a beautiful area, it really is. It'd be a great, great home to have and a nice pasture area. But I would like to really challenge this, and I hope that my tax dollars are being heard right now. This is a serious situation. Mike had alluded to the fact that they're putting up a solar farm at the end on Airport Road. So there'll be a solar farm that is supposed to work with this Bitcoin dispensary that I just found out about. So they're building a building that's across the street from Landis Farm now. And I haven't seen solar panels yet, but I'm just thinking about all the traffic that'll be coming in there. And then we've got this issue with this building that they're talking about. They don't want to attach it to their home, but they want to build a 4,000-square-foot building that is crooked on a lot, that we're all going to be affected by. And the scary part is, if that house gets sold and someone else ends up buying that land with that house and that building, we have no control over the future use of that space or the noise that that could generate. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Now, Ms. Woodward, now.
Can I respond to a few of those boards? And then Ms. Woodward.
Go ahead, Cat.
I want to reiterate the certainty that we do have over the R1 zoning district and the noise ordinance that is applicable citywide. So while the homeowners would be, you know, storing cars in this building, the entire property would still be subject to the noise ordinance that is enforceable across the city. The property would also still be R1 single-family residential, and the variance would only apply to the building. We're not consenting to any sort of commercial activity on the lot. We're not- We're not allowing any sort of painting or fumes to be generated by the storage of the lot, of the cars or the work on the cars within this building. It's really, the variance pertains to the size of the building. We're not allowing for any sort of home occupation. We're not allowing for any future commercial storage use or industrial storage use on the lot. The lot is still subject to R1, single-family land use and zoning regulations. I think those are the only two. Oh, one other thing. The site plan, while I do agree, is a little bit confusing. While the building would be on a 45-degree angle, it would be north of that fence that splits the property in half. So the pasture area that's on the southern half of the lot would remain pasture. So it would be closer to the existing stable and the house and seven feet from the eastern property line. So the pasture would remain unaffected and it would be on that northern half. And that's all I've got for now. Sure.
If I may ask, Kat, so for all those things that you listed that would not be allowed, if any home occupation or storage or whatever, industrial use wanted to be permitted, whoever owned the property, whether it be this homeowner or a future homeowner, would have to come back to this board and ask for that to be permitted?
So that's a good question. Industrial uses would not be permitted in the R1 zoning district. That would have to go through a full-blown rezoning. And given the surrounding area, Somerset and Landis Farms, I highly doubt that would be supported. I don't think it would make it through plan commission or city council. As for home occupation permits, those come in three different types, A, B, and C. C would require a conditional use permit. So if someone wanted to use this building for anything beyond a very low-intensity home occupation, it would have to come back to the zoning board of appeals. It would be a different process than the variance. It would go through the conditional use permit process.
Permission to address the board?
Go on, Mark.
Thank you. So the question about the plan review process. So Morton buildings may come in 24, 29-foot heights. But the zoning ordinance caps the height of an accessory building at 15 feet at the midpoint of the roof line. If somebody submits a building permit for something taller than that, it would be denied. So there is that. Now, 15 feet at the midpoint could be, you know, 20 feet and 10 feet. You look at the midpoint, that's how the zoning ordinance is written.
Yes, Nancy?
And how would you control painting or fumes in that building? I would think that restoring antique cars would require painting, sanding, et cetera.
I'll let Deb get at the heart of what, you know, what restoration and what work they would be doing on the cars. But as far as fumes or any sort of noise that would violate the noise ordinance, we would take complaints from the neighborhood and respond to them accordingly.
Deborah, are you still on?
Yes, I am. And, yeah, the, the plan was to make it a very pleasing-looking building with insulation. So it would be an insulated building. And I understand the concerns of the neighbors. We bought it also as our forever home, looking to put updates and stuff into the house to make it more valuable for the area.
Stop. Matt, go ahead.
Hi, Deb. I have a couple of questions.
To who?
To Deb.
Deborah, go ahead.
One is, I know, I guess it looks pretty initial in the planning process based on the sketches. I was wondering, is 4,000 absolutely what you need? Or can that be scaled down? The second would be, is there a reason to keep that barn that I guess the residents have said is dilapidated? And actually have more site to work with? And I guess the other thing is, are you opposed to fencing of any sort to kind of hide any kind of aesthetic differences that the neighborhood might have?
Yes, we're still under the designs, I'm sorry. Designs with, we've got an architect and a builder that's waiting, depending on this process. And the idea is to make sure that that barn, it's going to take some work to make that look like the newer building. But we're trying to make it where it all look nice and very well kept.
I guess my other question is, are you set on 4,000 square feet? Or is there a reason for 4,000 instead of 3,000 or 2,000?
We're, we're looking at, again, how much storage it is. There is the possibility that we could do a 40 by 80. We're still trying to figure out the amount of space that we need to store the vehicles. But there is the potential that it might be a little smaller.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Any other comments from staff? And I believe we are ready to have this question called. This being a request for a major variance, it also would have to pass by the necessary majority to be forwarded on to the city council. So do we have a motion?
I move for the approval of proposed major variance in case ZBA-2022-major-05 to the Urbanity City Council with the following conditions. The garage will generally conform with the submitted site plan as shown in Exhibit C, not to exceed 4,000 square feet. Exhibit A, location map. Exhibit B, zoning map. Exhibit C, garage site plan. Exhibit D, site photos. Exhibit E, variance application.
It's been so moved, is there a second to that motion? It's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? Yes, Charles?
Well, I guess I'm against this. Just because I don't think we have the facts. I, I just, I don't. Number one, the main problem with this discussion to me is where's the water going to go? Now, you might tell me that the building has to go through the building code inspection. Well, they, they'll tell us where the water's going to run to. Are they going to make them build a pond back there for the runoff? Go ahead.
Can I answer that?
Sure.
The zoning ordinance requires stormwater management plans when development is going to exceed 10,000 square feet. Our total impervious surface will exceed 10,000 square feet. Typically, that doesn't come into play with single-family houses. Given the size of this house and then the garage, the existing shed, and potentially the driveway, that may be something that comes into play during the plan, plan review and building permit review process. That's something that's required by the zoning ordinance. I think it could also be built in as a condition for the, for the city engineer to look at this if this was something we had significant concerns about. I would also mention that the significant open space on the lot is impervious surface. So that's where that open space requirement comes into play. So there is significant, well, pervious surface to offset the impervious surface on the lot. Although that doesn't really bring into play drainage.
Well, yeah, I don't think we've got that answer at all. And to me, if you're going to pass this, you better come up with some sort of screening for hundreds of feet here that the applicant should be responsible for. And I think you're going to have to figure out how high it has to be by how high the building ends up being, whether you're going to plant trees or they're going to build a fence. So I guess I'm just against this.
You have something to say, Matt?
I think I'm also on the same. I just don't have enough information other than that sketch. There's not a lot to make a decision on. And I'm usually one that says yes to most, most things. And I don't know, I'd feel like punting it to the next meeting and let the applicant get some more detailed information that has addressed the concerns of the neighborhood and something that we can chew on a little bit more than just, I guess, a sketch on the land. I don't know if that is within our purview, but to me, I would either be against it.
I would welcome the tabling of this motion as the person who made it.
Table it, right?
Yes, the case could be, or continue to the next zoning board of appeals meeting.
It.
If I can, if I can also make a statement?
Yes, I think this would be a friendly motion or whatever. But, yes, go ahead.
Sure. So I'll just say it. This case sucks. Because no, there's going to be unhappy people here no matter what. On one hand, I'm inclined to say yes because this is their land. They bought this. It's not part of Landis Farms. It's not part of Landis Farms. The previous owner could have turned it into a park if he had wished. He did not donate it to the city of Urbana. He could have sold it to someone else. He did not. This is their land. But, you know, and I grew up in a subdivision where my brothers and I used to run around undeveloped land out back. And I'm bummed now that there are houses behind there when I go to visit my parents. But that's that. That being said, I do think that maybe there could be a chance that this could be more amicable if the landowners had a more sketched-out plan than just a square on a property map for us to look at, that everyone could look at and say, this is something that people could be more comfortable with. So I, you know, I'd be open. I, I move that we table this until the next meeting and encourage the landowner to give us more details on what they plan to develop.
Can I ask a follow-up question real quick?
Go ahead.
Can, can we ask for specific things to bring back to you in September? If you'd like to see screening? I think a sound site plan is a good thing to have. Drainage-related things, any of those? Just to give us some direction.
I'd like to see what the building's going to look like.
I would like to see more distance away from the property lines.
Right.
That large a building. And because the building, I, I gather, is going to be on the front half of the property, that's kind of squished. That's kind of squished. So I, I just think it's too close to the property lines.
We have a motion that we need to vote on.
So a motion to table is, is privileged over the existing motion?
Well, I think that we have that authority. So I believe that we will table this, have it continued to the next meeting. Yes, and we need to vote on, on the request to table it. There's no further discussion. All right. It's been moved that we table the motion to call the question. So why don't we vote on that first?
We need a second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Now can we have roll call?
Nancy Yutman?
To table.
Yes.
Charles Warmbrun?
Yes.
Harvey Welch?
Yes.
Joanne Chester?
Yes.
Matt Cho?
Yes.
Ashley McLaughlin?
Yes.
And Adam Roche?
Yes.
Now, I believe we also have, not necessarily a motion, but we have to have a motion, I guess, to have this continued to our next meeting. So entertain a motion.
Do we know what the date of the next meeting is? September?
Yeah, September 21st.
I move that we continue this case until September 21st, the next regular meeting of the zoning board of appeals.
It's been so moved, is there a second to that motion? It's been moved and seconded. Can we call that for roll call vote?
Charles Warmbrun?
Yes.
Harvey Welch?
Yes.
Joanne Chester?
Yes.
Matt Cho?
Yes.
Ashley McLaughlin?
Yes.
And Adam Roche?
Yes.
And Nancy Yutman?
All right, now to the members of the audience. This being a continued hearing, we will give you further opportunity to respond at the next meeting. So we appreciate your patience to the next meeting for anyone who wants to be heard further on this. Thank you. Is there any old business?
No, there is not.
Is there any new business?
No, there is not.
Any audience participation? We have two members of the audience you wish to be heard, sir?
We've heard enough.
Okay.
Thank you so much, though.
All right, is there a staff report?
No, there is not.
Study session?
Nope.
Then I move that we adjourn.
We are adjourned to 8:48 PM. Thank you.
All right. What a meeting. I haven't had one like this in a long time.